The views and opinions expressed in the following program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect those of KSMQ Public Service Media Incorporated or its assigns.
Welcome to the Heart of the Matter Deployment Town Hall Special. Tonight, we're talking about how life changes for families and communities when National Guard soldiers are deployed to active duty. I'm your host, Stephanie Passingham. Stay tuned for the Heart of the Matter. The recent National Guard deployment in our region has resulted in some major changes in our communities, for spouses, children, parents, friends. It also has an impact on the community at large, churches, employers, volunteer organizations. Our communities lose out on the contributions these soldiers normally make in their daily lives. The Heart of the Matter will explore the result of these absences with an excellent panel of experts and a full house in our live studio audience. We'll start with a look at the changing role of the National Guard, followed by a closer look at the impacts on families and communities, closing with a recap of what resources are available for help. Let's welcome our panelists. Jen Dolan, Family Support Group Co-Chair. Pat Correll, Family Assistance Center Representative. Staff Sergeant Josh Barker, Training NCO with the two of the 135th Infantry Division in Albert Lee. Tim Hunsucker, Supervisor at Pace Dairy. And Lindsey Moritz, Spouse of a Deployed Soldier. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We'd also like to welcome members of our at-home audience to join us at any time by making a comment or asking a question. You can call, tweet, or email us using the information you see on the screen. We are also so pleased to have an enthusiastic and informed in-studio audience tonight. I'll be turning to them often to share their personal experiences and professional knowledge to enhance our discussion. We are going to open tonight's show by revisiting Deployment Day. Let's start right here.
May 31, 2011. Spring has come to southern Minnesota. But this day at the National Guard Armory in Albert Lee is anything but calm. Delta Company, 2nd Battalion, 135th Infantry is departing for 12 months of active duty. The air is charged with emotion. Fresh soldiers, all men, average age 27 years. The drawdown phase of U.S. military operations in Iraq involves 2,400 members of the Minnesota Army National Guard. It is the second-largest deployment of the Minnesota National Guard since World War II. Eighty soldiers are leaving their jobs, families, and communities behind.
She's sad.
For some, the moment could not be more bitter. Others seem to take it in stride.
Where's Sierra at?
Platoon Sergeant Jeffrey Dolan and his wife Jen have the script down pretty well.
I suppose I better go out and get Sierra? Oh, here she is. Speak of this.
Do you have like a job or something?
Four tours of active duty in the Middle East, with three years off in between.
Oh, Pam took my first, alright.
Daughter Sierra was an infant during Jeff's first tour. Now 13, she explores independence, helps younger sister Shelby, and savors every last moment with Dad.
Just the thought of missing out on the little things that happen on day-to-day life, the little funny things that my young daughter does, or the craziness my other daughter comes up with, those are the things that I can hear about, but I don't get to see them. So those, I miss those greatly, so.
The scene has played dozens of times so far this year. The hometowns of the 2nd Battalion, 135th Infantry include Owatonna, Austin, Albert Lee, and Rochester. 178 communities in all, across Minnesota and surrounding states.
Sergeant Eric Kiley.
Here, First Sergeant.
Second Lieutenant Scott.
Departure moves along at a good clip.
Sergeant First Class Jeffrey Dolan.
Here, First Sergeant.
Specialist Michael Noffenbach.
Here, First Sergeant.
Sergeant Trevor Allison.
This is Trevor's third deployment.
Specialist Andrew Miskin.
Here, First Sergeant.
I think the hardest part for me is seeing everyone else, and especially husbands and fathers with young children. And, you know, Trevor's a young adult now, and that makes it easier for us. I think this is going to be a real unusual or more difficult deployment for him and for us because of his serious girlfriend, which he never had on the previous deployments. So, we're going to be there to support her and help her as much as we can.
It was his choice. He's an adult. He made the choice. I'll support him as much as I can. He's got to do what he's got to do.
The sweetness of life interrupted by the realities of life. For 12 months, email, phone calls, video chats, and support groups will soften the blow of separation. But when these soldiers board the bus, their families, employers, and communities will begin to deal with the true cost of 80 unfilled spaces.
Your platoon is so loud.
Our platoon's loud.
There is time for joking.
Let your shining top go with these guys.
Heck, yeah, they are.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Time for respect.
You're going to work out today, huh?
Platoon!
Time for formation.
Out there!
And time to get packing. And then, there is time for nothing else but goodbye.
Just take a lot of deep breaths and just think about my family and think about my job in the future and keep my mind clear so I can come home safely.
Alright, we'll see ya. Come on. Look at her, she's half asleep. Nope, Dad's got to go bye-bye. We got to go up front, watch the buses go by. Oh, here they come. New wave. Oh, there he is.
Jen, that's tough. That's tough. Deployment Day is always hard. Now, you guys have been through this a number of times, and we talked to you a little bit about it, and what's it like? Did you know what you were getting into when you married a soldier?
Yeah, I did. We've been married for 14 years, actually, the day he left, so.
Wow, okay.
Back then, I mean, when he got in in '91, he's been in for 20 years already. I mean, obviously, stuff wasn't happening like it is nowadays.
Right.
But, I mean, I married into it, and.
Yeah, very proud of him.
Yep, great. And you had shared with us that this is something he just loves to do.
Loves it.
Loves it.
Yep, and it gets in his blood, I guess you can say.
Alright. Have the deployments changed over time? It seems like the mission of the National Guard kind of evolves over time. Give us a sense of the other places that he's been besides this current deployment.
Um, he went to Saudi Arabia in 2001. He's been to Kosovo twice, and then now Kuwait. And they're all different.
And they're all different.
They're all different climates. I mean, our child, well, my oldest, she's pretty much every stage, you know, infant on up to teenage. And now we have our two-year-old, but just.
Every one of them is different.
Is different, yep. Lindsey, what did your husband, when did he decide to enroll in the Guard? And were you guys married when that happened?
No, he decided to enroll, I believe, when he was 17 in high school.
Okay.
So, the driving force behind his was money for education. There's a great education package that comes with it, and he's been able to take advantage of that. But in talking to him, it's really interesting because that's what's a driving force, but now it's completely changed. Like Jen said, now it's just in his blood, it's who he is. And I met him coming off of his first deployment to Afghanistan. And so, when we'd married, I knew that this was our life, going to be our life.
Yep, this was part of the deal. Alright. I want to turn to the audience. In our audience, we have Staff Sergeant Stephen Davis, who is a recruiter for the National Guard. And Staff Sergeant Davis, what do folks usually say to you when they come into the office and they want to talk to you about joining the National Guard? What are some of their reasons for wanting to join?
Thank you, Staff Sergeant Davis. The reasons for wanting to join, you have the benefits, college, insurance, different things like that. Typically, it's, you have family tradition. That's usually one of the biggest incentives for people joining. And the opportunity to wear the uniform. There's no feeling than wearing the uniform, just being part of something bigger.
Alright. Sergeant Burkett, I'm going to come back up front for you. Your division has been deployed a number of times. Talk to us a little bit about the different missions that you guys have been on and how that has changed.
Well, the, a lot of them are peacekeeping missions. When they went to Kosovo and Afghanistan the first time, they were all peacekeeping missions. I myself went to Iraq, and that was not a peacekeeping mission, but we did a lot of transport and did a lot of movement of supplies and goods. Right now, I think they're pulling a support position on this current deployment, supporting the movement out of Iraq, from what I understand. Just all sorts of different tasks that they have to complete.
So, you guys just kind of respond when duty calls?
Yeah.
It sounds like it changes frequently.
State or federal. I mean, we sign on knowing that the state could pay us or the federal government could pay us, and we could be sandbagging or we could be overseas.
Great point, because a lot of folks, I think, previously used to think of National Guard as primarily, kind of almost like a branch of more local or regional or state law enforcement or emergency care or those kinds of things and sandbagging. But it sounds like some of your more recent deployments have been really active military duty. Does, what do your fellow troop members say about that?
A lot of the new recruits, actually, besides the college benefits, want to fight for the country, and that's what a lot of them come in for. And once you, like they've touched on before, once you get the uniform on, it's just, it becomes part of you and the camaraderie, and it just becomes a part of who you are. So, whatever mission they need to do, they get it done.
They do it, alright. Tim, you are an employer at Pace Dairy. You guys have employed individuals who have been members of the National Guard, and that really implies or requires a commitment. They go off and do training, and then they often are deployed. Give us a sense of what it's like to employ a National Guard member and kind of the pluses and minuses. I'm sure there are great things and then things that you have to kind of work around.
Yeah, typically, we don't find many minuses with it. Really, any member of the armed services, when they take on that responsibility, we support them from corporate on down. It helps support our community and our country. They return with a professionalism and some skill sets that aren't normally out there, and it really adds to our team. So, as far as any minuses, I really don't think that we have any from it.
Great. Alright. And Mark Ostrom, you're with the Olmsted County Attorney's Office, and you guys also have employed a number of guardsmen. Give us your perspective on that.
You know, it's, those folks bring a tremendous sense of service and a commitment to teamwork and things like that. It's such an important concept for any employer, particularly for us. We really enjoy having them as part of the team, but when you lose somebody like that to a deployment, it also, you feel a big gaping hole.
And we'll talk later in kind of how we go about filling those a little bit, but it certainly sounds like that is something that communities have been willing to work around and address, so, yeah. Cassie, I'm just going to go to you right next door. Tell us a little bit about your story and why your soldier decided to become part of the National Guard.
Well, I actually met my husband right after, when he was home on Christmas leave in between his AIT, and he went back for his last 10 days and graduated and came back, and that's when we actually started talking. We were dating for like two weeks, and he got his official orders, so, I mean, he gave me my option to get out of it while I could before deployment, but, so the first deployment was in '07 to '08 in Kosovo for K-49. And he, it actually connected us more. And then, last year, we married. So, we've been together for four and a half years, second deployment. What we've really learned about being in the Army and going through deployments is you really, the difference between a lot of different couples is a military couple and non-military couples. Your married couple in the military, they really take for granted the time that they have together, and they cherish that time, versus just assuming that your spouse or your partner is always going to be there. And it's clearly different between, you know, different friends of ours that they don't have that interaction, and you really have to depend on communication.
Alright, sounds good. Adam, I'm going to come to you in the back. You were previously deployed at a different time, and you worked actually with Tim at Pace Dairy. And so, Tim, or excuse me, Adam Wilkie, if you could stand up and just give us your perspective. Why did you join the Guard? Why was that important to you?
I joined the Guard off late in life. I was 35, going through basic training, so some of the guys I was with were a lot, well, half my age, so. I did it because I had a, I felt I had a void in my life. Also did it for the benefits. My wife, she's going to be here tonight, but supported me the whole way. She met me before I was enlisted, so she's, I've had two children since we've been together. And when I left for basic training, my boy was 10 months old. By the time I got back from deployment, he was almost two and a half, so. I love the military, and my wife supports me for it, and company, Pace Dairy definitely supports.
Alright, sounds good. And the different missions that you've been on, the different deployments that you've had, have they changed? I mean, have you done the sandbagging and the more active, engaged deployment?
Deployed in 2009, I was put in Kuwait. We did convoy security into Iraq. I was a lead gun truck driver, going on the convoys. As far as sandbagging, right now, I'm on orders for RRF up in Minot, North Dakota. Hopefully, getting called up here to help them out here soon, so.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, well, the role of National Guard does continually evolve, and the bottom line is that soldiers will experience time away from home. During our next segment, we're going to explore the impact this absence has on families. Let's continue our visit with the Dolan family.
Go down.
Jeff's wife, Jennifer, and his daughter, Sierra, are familiar with departure.
Woo!
But for young Shelby, it's all new. For this mom with a toddler and a teenager, some days of this deployment are flat-out difficult.
Little things I didn't expect. I guess, I don't know. It's, like I said, with Shelby, every day is a little thing I didn't expect, just my stress level. I didn't think that I would be as stressed out as I would, but I, some days, I'm worse than others.
Dad will miss some major milestones this year. Shelby turns two in October, and Sierra becomes a teen in November. The couple's 14th anniversary fell on May 31st. You guessed it, the day of Jeff's departure.
Without him here, it's different. It's way different. It's hard, some days, but, you know, we push through.
Routines are important to deployed soldiers and their families. Communication with loved ones is difficult because, for troops, phone service is usually poor, schedules are unpredictable, and security is always an issue. Dinner time here could be the middle of the night or the middle of a mission for Dad.
When Jeff got home from work, we would usually have supper right away. I try to keep the kids on a schedule. 6 o'clock, we ate, and after that was basically, we do family time. We would go for walks. That was our big thing, is going for walks. And after that would be basically just baths and bedtime, just spending time together.
37% of the soldiers in Company D2 have at least one dependent. No matter how well the deployment goes at home, a key part of the family routine is missing.
I tell my girls that, especially Sierra, that he's not going to a bad place. When she was littler, that's immediately where she thought. Well, Jeff always told us not to watch the news anyways when he was gone, but, you know, kids, they watch TV, they know what's going on, so.
They got.
He's safe, and they need to know that, and he's doing a good thing.
Advice from experts is to keep life as normal as possible and don't try to go it alone. Keep life as normal as possible and don't try to go it alone.
Mark and Shanna, and even my folks, they come out and they take the kids. Mark and Shanna will take them to their farm, and my folks will take them, and Jeff's folks will take them too. And, just for a day, or just for a couple hours, just to have time to go to the store without the kids or whatever. Throw it. Okay. My first deployment with Jeff, I was really stubborn. I was really stubborn, and I didn't reach out for help to anybody, so. And I'm learning to do that now, especially with Shelby.
Jen Dolan is a veteran on the home front of deployment, a position player in the game of departure. She treasures the support of her community and counts the days until her soldier comes
Pat, don't go it alone. We heard that a lot as we researched this story. You help families with that very process. Tell us how important it is to the "don't go it alone," that they should reach out for help.
Well, it's very important. You know, a lot of military families have pride. They always feel that they can do it themselves, and, you know, it's important that they let other people help them out, and it just makes the deployment that much easier on them. It gives them the breaks and the people to talk to that can help them through the process. So, it's very important that they share with the people around them and let them be part of what they're dealing with.
And you have a formal role in helping make that happen. Tell us about the service that you provide.
Okay. I work with the Minnesota Military Family Assistance Center, and my role is, I'm a resource and a referral to the soldiers and the families of all branches of the service around Minnesota. Families, if they have issues, whether it be with their military medical insurance, or maybe they have a young one that's struggling in school and needs some counseling, maybe it's just to find a support group. What we do is, the FAC, the Family Assistance Center, we provide them that resource. They call us, and we make the phone calls for them. That way, they're not calling this person who then puts them over to this person. They can make one phone call, we're there, we help them find the service they need. If it's something with a vehicle needs to be repaired, a support group, we help them so they don't have to make numerous phone calls to find that resource.
Lindsey, I'm going to ask you, but I would ask the audience to be thinking about the same thing too, and share your thoughts on it. But what's the hardest part? And particularly with this deployment, we've talked to a number of families who say they knew it was coming for so long, and that kind of was one of the challenges. But what was the hardest part for you in preparing for and then now starting the absence of your soldier?
I think I appreciated the long time. We had to take advantage of a lot of things. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Yep. Jen, you guys have been through this before. Give us a sense of what you do to kind of get ready for this.
I guess, first thing is for Sierra's school. We let them know that Jeff's going to be gone, just in case something happens in school. I mean, she's going to have her days, and, you know, they need to know what's going on. I mean, his deployments are so close together, it's, I mean, it's kind of hard to prepare for one to the next and the next and the next. We just, I don't know. I just, I've always been the one to take care of the financial stuff and all that, so for me.
Change of duties wasn't?
It's no different. I mean, I've always taken care of that in the 20 years we've been together, so.
Yeah, I think that's my role in a family too, is just to kind of take care of that. And it gave us a lot of time to make decisions about our son. He had some medical, just concerns, nothing major, but it allowed us to make decisions together, to set up just kind of a plan on all the ifs or whats or, you know, so we just kind of work on our communication constantly, whether he's, you know, so that, when he's here, so that when he's gone, that's already in place.
Alright, so a little advanced preparation. Heather, you are a spouse of a deployed person as well. Give us a sense of, is this his first deployment for you guys as a married couple, or have you been through this before, and what's been the toughest part?
You know what? This is our first deployment, and we decided to get married just before he left, because it takes a lot. It really does. Never thought about it until now. Yeah, it's tough.
Do you have friends and family that are nearby that you can turn to for support?
I live in Sherman. We're part of the 1125th Fairmont Unit, Red Bulls. He's been in there for about four years now. I've got all his family up there that helps support me. They're really great. The MC BTY up there, they've helped me a lot.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, thank you. Lori and Gary, I want to talk to you guys. Your perspective is just a little bit different. You mentioned on the story that you have been through this before, but you're parents, and so you come at it from a different perspective than some of the spouses. Tell us about the various deployments that Trevor's been through and what you guys do to prepare, and how do you deal with it while he's away?
This is Trevor's third deployment. His first one was when he was 19, and it ended up being a 22-month deployment, so he returned when he was 21.
Oh, wow.
That was probably the hardest. His mission, his mission over there was probably the most dangerous of any of the three deployments he's been on. So, we kind of, that was probably our trial period, getting through that. The second deployment was, he volunteered to join a Wisconsin unit, and that was also in Iraq. He was stationed in Baghdad there. And now this deployment is to Kuwait. But in preparation, we do a lot of, get his business together, and I'm still writing his checks, and, you know, that doesn't change any, but I think the hardest part is to see everything that he's missing. You know, he's at an age where a lot of his friends are getting married, and he would have been a part of the wedding, but, you know, he won't be there now, so.
Alright. And for those of you who are related to a service member, how does daily life change? Do you try to keep your routines the same? Do you develop special activities that you engage in while they're away? Give us a sense of how daily life changes while your soldier is away. Who wants to go first? Lindsey, alright?
For us, we try, it's kind of a little bit of both. We try to keep a consistent routine, just to keep our son's behaviors in check, I should say. You know, he is 18 months old, it's good to keep him kind of structured, but at the same time, the times that I have with him alone at home, when we used to be just, you know, reading books or playing out in the yard or whatnot, we spend going to the zoo or going here, going there, to just kind of be out of the house a little bit. When Matt was home, you know, we would go out together, and that's something that we did. And so, we try not to just be home and by ourselves, you know, we just.
Do you find you think more about him then when you're home? Is that why you choose to go out and do activities?
Well, we all, I mean, I always think about him, but it's hard because it's like, oh, well, because he used to feed Grayson, our son, his dinner. I would work at night, so that's one thing that had to change, my hours at work had to change, so that I would be home to feed him dinner and pick him up from daycare. So, those times, you know, obviously are a little bit harder, so we try and keep ourselves
Go ahead, Heather.
The routine that we used to have in our house was Dallas would always wake up my son at 6 o'clock in the morning. He'd change him, because he was still young. He'd give him a bottle, and then he'd bring him down to me in my bedroom, and I'd sit with him for a few hours, and then I'd go upstairs while Dad went to work. When Dad came home, Dad would always play with him. Now, it's more on the line of, I've moved my bedroom closer to my son, so that way, at 6 or anywhere from till 9, he'll wake me up and we'll go, we'll do something, whether it's walk outside, go to the park, anything. Just try to get away from our house where we know Dad's not there.
Okay. Cassie, any changes in your schedule as you guys have adjusted to, you know, it's been a couple, just a couple months now, which.
Well, we moved right before he left for annual training, so we kind of had, we were super busy those three weeks up until he left, and it didn't, like, the whole deployment aspect didn't really kick in until he finally left after we moved. So, we used to spend Saturdays and Sundays, because that was when I was off from work. So, we used to spend Saturdays and Sundays, because that was when I was off from work. So we spent our weekends just doing whatever, whether it was just hanging out at home, watching movies, or taking walks in Owatonna. So now I actually find myself going in and visiting my family more often, and getting out of the house. But then there's just times where you just need to be in the house, because it's your home. And so, for me, my schedule, he's kind of adapted some things to help me out, because of the time difference. You know, I might only get to talk to him for a few minutes here and there, but he knows what I have at work with instant messaging, that my boss has set me up on to communicate with him. So he's made a screen name, and so he can pop on and just say, "Hi honey, how's your day going?" And then, like, actually tonight, you know, he's going to get up early tomorrow, his time, just to talk to me before I go to bed. So it's just kind of being able to coordinate both of our schedules.
Okay. And communication can be a challenge when you're on completely different time schedules. You guys have raised an interesting point, too, in terms of employers being supportive of spouses and family members. I want to go back to Norm. You are with the ESGR. If you'd stand up and tell us a little bit about, your organization actually helps employers be supportive of the guard, and often that includes being supportive of the family that's still here.
ESGR stands for Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve. And it's covered under a federal law called USERA, and that's Uniformed Service Employment Reemployment Act of 1972, 80, 94, 95, and many amendments. But basically what it is, it protects the soldier that they will get their job or position back when they return. The most important thing is that we brief them prior to going, so that they follow the procedure, because a soldier has to have a procedure that they follow, and let their employer know that they're going to be gone, and how long they're going to be gone for, if possible, and give them a copy of the orders. And upon return, if they are gone over 181 days, they have to report back within 90 days, or they do not get their position back. So there are laws that cover them. And there's also a family law that protects families, that they can take leave, but there has to be 50 employers before they can get these leaves. But it's very important that these procedures are followed, because if you don't follow the procedure, they do not have to reemploy you. And we emphasize that to young soldiers, because sometimes young ones, when they first leave, they feel, "Take this job and shove it." And I always tell them, "You may not want that job back, because jobs are hard to find." So it's very important that they follow the procedures. And if we do run into a problem, I'll go out and visit the employer with the soldier, and see what the problem is, why they're not being reemployed, and are they getting their benefits back that they had prior to leaving? So it's a very important step in their military career that they do, because if they do have civilian jobs, they have to follow these procedures.
Sure. Sure. And it's an important partnership. I mean, you know that they're going to be deployed, and yet they have to have kind of regular jobs, as it were, when they are at home. Tim, I want to talk to both you and Mark about, you guys have employed actually the soldiers that have been away, but have either one of you had family members, like, they've talked about these gals, their employers have helped them set up instant messaging, or ways that they can kind of work their schedule around their soldier being gone, because sometimes that makes a huge difference. If you're working nights, then do you need to shift today? I mean, let's talk a little bit about the accommodations that actually employers make for family members that are still here. Would you like to start, Tim?
Sure. Why not? We actually had, I guess our most recent was an employee on third shift. Her and her husband have been married for, I believe, around 10 years. The first deployment, I believe, was the most stressful for her. We do have a good percentage of veterans and people that are in the National Guard, so there was some understanding. So it's really a family there, so there was a lot of activity involved to support her through those times. The second one wasn't quite as stressful or as tough. But we do, her position, she really doesn't have some of the accesses to the computers and things that other people would, but we do allow those times for the support, for the talking. There really is a lot of communication involved to support anyone when their spouse is on deployment. So we've allowed some of those times to go through, and then some of the shifting of the schedules, anything to support them as best we can.
Okay. So requests would be scheduled shifts, or breaks at appropriate times to communicate? Anything in your office, Mark, that you have noticed has been really helpful to the families of the soldiers? Things that they've requested to kind of make their life a little easier?
I haven't had any family members, actually, of deployed soldiers, although the one soldier we've had deployed for about a year now, we treated his wife as a family member with us, and were very supportive of her. But we also, interestingly, had a couple very close people to Ross, my attorney that was a deployed. His legal assistant and his lead attorney were very close to him, and we made a point to set up times when they could Skype with Ross, when he was in Iraq, back and forth. They were very close, very close, like family members, and we thought it was very important that they have that opportunity to have some private time with him. So I'd actually bring him into my office, set up the Skype, and I'd leave. So we kind of had it in a sense.
You're right, because it's friends, too, and people, coworkers that are close to these folks as well. You mentioned Skype, and that is a great segue to, Sierra was telling me earlier that just today, she Skyped with her dad. And Sierra, tell us a little bit about how that works, and what you guys talked about today. If you'd, go ahead and stand up for me, please. So, did your mom help you set up the Skype?
Uh, no.
Okay. So you know how to do, maybe you showed your mom how?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So tell us how that works.
I don't know.
When you're Skyping, can you see and hear him?
Yeah.
Okay. And so what did you guys talk about?
Well, I talked about what I taught Shelby. Taught her the same song.
Okay. So how long do you usually get to visit when you're on Skype? Is it like, five minutes, or a half an hour, or...
I'm not sure.
Okay. And how often do you usually get to visit with Dad that way?
This was our first time Skyping with him.
Okay. All right. And where was he when you talked to him?
Uh... Huh? In his room.
In his room. Okay. All right. And was he already in Kuwait, or was he still here in the States?
Kuwait.
In Kuwait. All right. Jen, maybe you can pick up on that a little bit. Tell us about that Skype experience, and how it went.
It went really well, actually. He just got over there, so, you know, it took him a while to get it set up and whatnot, but it went really well. We've never Skyped before.
Okay.
We've always just had the MSN, or the Yahoo, or whatever. This is our first time Skyping, but it went well. It's actually really, the connection's actually really nice. I was really surprised. His previous deployments were really choppy, and, but this is really actually a really, really good connection this time. But it went well. They talked about, she's teaching Shelby new songs, and whatnot, so it went really well.
Okay. Sergeant Barker, when, I'm sure you hear a lot from both family members and from members of your division, what are the greatest needs that you hear about? What are the greatest concerns that the soldiers express to you? "Gosh, I hope this is taken care of while I'm gone." Or that the families come to you and say, "You know, I really could use some help in this area." Can you give us some specifics?
Specifics? I don't, I haven't heard a lot from the actual soldiers that are there on things that they need. I mean, they're always making sure that their family stuff's lined up. A lot of it is insurance-based, so I refer them to Mr. Coro here. And then, we have now started a Yellow Ribbon Community in Albert Lee, and one of the people that belongs to that has an open office space that they're using for extra computers for families that want to Skype, that don't have the means. And that's, the communication's the biggest thing that I think the families are concerned about.
Yep. And some great tools to stay in touch now that weren't available before. Really changed. Well, it is certainly clear that families feel the effects of deployment most keenly. But as communities as a whole feel their absence as well, it's a time of pulling together. And fortunately, there is a growing list of resources available to help. And let's take a look at one example.
It's important for Austin to develop a Yellow Ribbon Steering Committee, and be designated a Yellow Ribbon City, to show that we support our troops. It just shows that you take pride in the people that serve in your city, and it shows them that you support them and take pride in their actions.
So the Yellow Ribbon Community is really forming a steering committee within the community, made up of all key areas within the community, to come together to infuse support for service members and military families throughout the community.
The Yellow Ribbon Network sets up a program where you can call one person, and they will find you the right service. You could spend three, four hours, sometimes even days, or not be aware of these services at all. And the Yellow Ribbon Program expedites that. It's more like a directory than anything else, where there aren't actual programs, you know, the Yellow Ribbon is going to fix your car. No, but we'll put you in touch with people that'll maybe fix your car, and ways of financing it if you don't, you know, if you need help, and things like that.
So across Minnesota in our communities, just miracles have been happening. We have been seeing wonderful things happen, from supporting a family who has been hit by a crisis with an injured service member, to anything from, that the family might need, from snow shoveling to landscaping. We have seen so many things happen across our state, simply by coordinating and synchronizing, and getting resources within a community to work together to meet all the needs of our service members and their families. We have seen where our communities have really done an effort to ensure that our service members feel welcomed home when they come home. So we've seen relationships built in our communities with our newest veterans and their families, so that they're able to come back and be great leaders within their community, and give back to their community. So there are a growing number of these Yellow Ribbon Communities. And Ken, Rail, I'm going to go ahead and start with you. Tell us a little bit about, you work with these groups in southeastern Minnesota. Austin was recently received that designation. What does it take for a community to become a Yellow Ribbon Community? And what can they do to help the families of the deployed members?
Well, I think the specialness is that we have to have a group of people who have a real passion and an understanding for what our military service members are going through. And we're the Yellow Ribbon entity for Rochester and Olmsted County. We've been together about, for two years, but we have a passionate group of people, some 20 to 25 people who want to serve the military families as best we can. We do that in three different ways. One of the ways is we have a free military family event every month. That's a way for military families to come in and connect with each other, and connect with us, and learn about our services. We also have a free, a monthly support group for military parents. Often, the unheard people who never get any services, or don't understand what's going on. But once a month, our military parents, folks on the Guard or Reserve units can come together and get a free cup of coffee, and talk about their children wherever they have to be. And then finally, we also have a brand-new thing that we're doing for military wives, deployed wives, where they can come together, get a couple hours of free childcare down the hall, while we give them coffee and some baked goods, and just an opportunity for them to connect and get together, and share something. And often in these events, we hear about how they may need, or have a need, that we're able to then work in this larger Yellow Ribbon Community with Pat Coro, and Family Readiness Groups, and Sergeant Dave Thule here, and other places. We can find a resource. We recently found help for a family out in St. Charles with a faith community that's willing to come and do sidewalk shoveling, or, excuse me, snow removal and lawn mowing. We found a church that's willing to help stain a deck with a family. We just recently found a brand-new gal who married a soldier in the Reserve, and she didn't have, just before his deployment, about a month ago, she didn't have an ID card. Pat Coro was able to find her an ID card, and get that taken care of, which is a very, very important piece of paper for a military wife. So I think the other piece that's very important that people often don't understand is that the Guard is just superb about getting the word out about the support structure. But there are dozens and dozens, probably hundreds, in the state of Minnesota, in the Air Guard, Air Reserve, National, or, excuse me, in the Navy Reserve, and particularly in the Army Reserve, who have no clue. They just don't even know what the resources are. And they connect with us. We're sort of the portal entry for, how about, where else can we get those supports? So we're very proud to be part of the whole entire Yellow Ribbon Network.
Great. And from what I understand, you serve not only, you know, guardsmen in reservists, but active duty as well, right?
That's right. We have several active duty families. Families that have chosen to come back and live in the Rochester area, while their husbands in all these cases are on active duty out of Fort Campbell, Kentucky, Fort Bragg, North Carolina, or out of the San Diego Naval Base. And so, we're there to help serve them. They have no other support structure either, besides us.
Great. Go ahead, Pat.
As a Family Assistance Center, we're what they call Purple. So we work with all of the branches of service. So, you know, with the resources of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, you know, that's how we find out a lot about our Army Reserve counterparts, our active duty family members who decided their loved one has been deployed three times now, and they're tired of being on that active duty base by themselves for a year, or maybe their loved one's going to be transferring to a new base when they return. So they're returning home, but we have no way of finding out about those families, so we can provide services to them without the help of the Yellow Ribbon Groups when they have their events. They find out, they pass those families along to us, so we can ensure they get all the other resources, and have the services provided that they no longer have on an active duty base.
Jen, you had a comment? Nope? Okay. All right. You guys made some key points about, sometimes it's hard to discover these things until you get together and do activities as a group, and families start sharing. Lindsay, tell us about some of the events. I know Jen is the co-chair of the Family Support Group in the Albert Lee area, and I understand you are a regular attendee of that, and tell us why.
Well, I first initially started getting involved because it was very important to my husband, and at that time boyfriend, that I connected. And then, you just meet a great group of people who are doing, going through the exact same thing. So just last weekend, this last weekend, we had a picnic, and so you just kind of can check in on each other. "Oh, I'm doing this, let's get together." And that's why I stay in. And it's just fun activities, and you're all, you can all just kind of go there and take a deep breath, and know that you're surrounded by people who are going through the same types of things.
Great. It's great that you have others who are in the same situation. Jen, what advice do you give to folks who have friends whose families are not necessarily engaged in the military, or aren't as familiar with that world? What can they do to offer help? You have a great friend who helps your family, and tell us a little bit about what she does, and what others can do, right?
Shannon Schuster and her husband, Mark, very, very good friends of ours. They will come, and they will take my kids, and just give me a little bit of a breather. You know, they need a breather from me, I need a breather from them every once in a while. And, yeah, I mean, if you have, if you're having trouble, you need to reach out to people. I had a hard time doing that the first couple deployments, but you need to. If you need help, reach out to a friend. If you need help with anything, if it's taking your kids, if it's going shopping, doing something, you have to reach out.
Sergeant Thule, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, there's a comment in the audience. Lori, Nelson, go ahead, share.
I just wanted to share that I recently became connected with the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Albert Lee, and I learned of it through Facebook. And I think Facebook is also another, a great way for everyone to keep supporting each other instantly, and just be there for each other. Our daughter just applied, she's 18 now, and she just applied to be a caregiver through sitter, babysitter place, or caregiver place that we learned about through this program. So I think that's, I think having her perspective could be really helpful, if she's sitting for kids that have a parent deployed.
Terrific. Terrific. Sergeant Thule, you have a more official role, but tell us a little bit about how this Yellow Ribbon Program is so helpful to families, and maybe how they can plug in? How could they find one that serves their area? We've heard, you know, Austin has one, Albert Lee has one, Rochester has one. How do they plug into that? And tell us about your role.
Well, it's an interesting challenge for families to try and find Yellow Ribbon Communities. The military can't tell Yellow Ribbon Communities who's in the military, and even if we could, we could only say who's in the National Guard. And as has been said, there's so many other military families out there. My job is, I'm a Yellow Ribbon Outreach Coordinator, so I work with other cities, including Austin and Albert Lee, to get their Yellow Ribbon Community up and running and off the ground. And it's rewarding. I'm at that point in my military career when I'm not able to go overseas and serve with my soldiers anymore. So it's rewarding to help build a community that's going to be able to support their families when they do deploy overseas.
Great. Great. Thank you. Colleen, I want to come to you, because you don't necessarily have a family member deployed, but you feel it's important to be involved in supporting these folks. Tell us how you do that.
Absolutely. Rochester Community and Technical College was the first men's Q organization that was designated a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon campus. So, we're very proud of that. And the work that we do through our Veterans Organization, our Veterans Resource, and also our Vet Club, it was just a natural step to be able to offer support to the military families. We've hosted two Halloween parties, and there's nothing cuter than watching the child development students put together all of these games and so forth, but then you watch a Yellow Jacket football player who happens to be about six foot six escorting a little princess around and carving pumpkins and so forth. It's absolutely delightful. And these families are so appreciative of the little help that we can give, but also the resources through some of our vocational technical college aspect of being able to go out and say, "Okay, the military soldier isn't there and the air conditioner breaks. Wouldn't that be nice to have somebody to come and help out?" So, through our different programs, we're able to help out, too.
Sounds good. I want to come back to the employer piece a little bit. Tim, you guys had an example, and Adam, feel free to jump in when you'd like, but you had an example of where you were able to kind of keep that position open for him while he was deployed. Help employers who may be watching at home, give them some ideas on how you can do that, because some businesses are so small, they can't. I mean, they've got to fill their workforce. But give us some specific examples of how you guys changed your schedule or did what you did to hang on to that job for Adam for when he came home.
Well, basically, as Adam left us, each of our mechanics, specifically talking about the maintenance group, and then, we have, of course, our production group. But everyone carries their own workload, so we have to split that workload amongst the other groups or peers. Everyone's done that willingly. That's really, as far as specific examples, we don't have that much. Adam did leave us, let me see if I can move on with this. Adam did leave us. We did try and keep some contacts and keep some areas and keep him as much a part of the family there at the area as we could. So, he would email when he had opportunities, so along with his other family, we would go ahead and do that and share that, so everyone felt that as they're carrying his load, he's really still there with us.
All right. So, kind of helped draw that team together, and it sounds like maybe it even helped with morale and gave them some reason, you know, if they're taking on that extra work, they had a reason why.
It really did.
All right, cool, great. We had a question in the audience. Norm?
I have a strange situation, and it goes back to helping soldiers. Back in 2001, 9/11, my son got activated 10 days after school started. He's a principal in the Spring Valley. And superintendent called me up and asked me if I could come out of retirement and take over and run the school for the year. You know, here's the school year starting, and I've always said that I would substitute for anybody that's being activated, so the school can carry on, because you, all of a sudden, you start a school year and you don't have a principal and you're not be a certified person. And so, I did it for a year.
Great, great example. So, people even who are retired can come back and help out and fill those spots until the soldier returns. All right, superb. Rich, you were active duty. You've heard a lot of these stories of people about what the needs are. How is it different? And what do you notice? You're also part of the Yellow Ribbon Group in Albert Lee, but what do you see as the most important thing that a community can do to support these soldiers today?
Well, I think, you know, we can look at the soldiers, and we know they're making a huge sacrifice for us. We know that's what they're doing, and it's easy to see. But to see what the families are going through, you know, what Lindsay and Jen and Cassie and Heather and Trevor's family, what they're going through and the sacrifice they're making. I think back to November of 1977, when I was going overseas to Korea, and I left a six-month pregnant wife, and I didn't get to see that boy born, or didn't see him until he was seven, several months old, you know? And that was before the Yellow Ribbon. So, I think it's so critical that the community gets behind these, you know, folks and just is there for them, you know, to help watch kids. And Jen, I haven't got a call yet from you, I offered my services, so. But I think to be there for them, once in a while, they just need a hug, they just need somebody to talk to, they need help with just some, you know, something that's troubling them in their house. And we need to be there as a community. And as a state representative also, I want to be there to help from the state's perspective, to help, you know, just be an active person in our community that just says, "You know what? If you don't know where to turn for something, call us. We'd love to help you. We'd love to do something for you." So, it's just really important that the community gets behind you and just helps you, from the littlest things to the biggest things, everything involved.
All right. Pat, give us a phone number, a something, where can people call? People are watching at home and saying, "You know, I'd really love to volunteer," or should we direct them to the Yellow Ribbon Community or Committee in their community? Should they call you? What's that one phone call they can make if they want to help support these military families?
If they want to help support military families, they can either call myself, my phone number is 651-268-8413, or I would encourage them to go to the beyondtheyellowribbon.org website. And there's a care initiative place on that website where they can sign up their services, because our families go to this website, and that's one of the resources they have to find what's out there and available.
All right, superb, thank you. We'll have folks do that, and we'll also post that on our Facebook page as well. It's great the way communities have been responding to the various needs of these military families. We want to thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Our panelists are going to be sharing some additional thoughts on Facebook after the program. If you want to be part of that conversation, please log on and join that discussion, like us, and share your thoughts as well. We appreciate everyone's participation, and thank you to our panelists, our studio guests, our viewers at home. You can find dates and times for the encore presentation of this program on our website, ksmq.org. Thanks for joining us. From the heart of the matter, I'm your host, Stephanie Passingham. Good night.